The legislature is back in session. Senators, there is going to be some changes as we move forward. Senator Underwood has asked that we set aside Bill 70 and there being no objections to that, so ordered. And we will continue on the list. And I have on the first tier Senator Torres on Bill Number 81-33.
Hafiday and Buenos dias, Madam Speaker. I move that we place Bill 81-33 on third reading file. And if you'll allow, I'd like to discuss my bill briefly, please. Is the bill substituted? Bill 81-33 as amended by the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication?
Okay, as amended. Okay, Senator, then you may proceed.
Madam Speaker, Bill 81-33 is an act to amend subsection C of section 4405 and add a new section 4406.2, both of Article 4, Chapter 4, Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, relative to mandating the use of an administrative law judge under the Civil Service Commission to clarify certain functions and to establishing time standards in case management practices. Madam Speaker, Bill Number 81-33 is an attempt to fix and to facilitate what is perceived to be a very big problem with the Civil Service Commission. What Bill 81-33 does is it gives the Civil Service Commission additional resources to help facilitate case management in a more timely and in a more timely manner. We understand that there is a serious need to provide a solution to the extensive backlog of cases before the Civil Service Commission. And what I'm doing with this bill is I'm not only addressing what is perceived to be the problem, a lack of resources perhaps, but to also give our citizens a clear indication of what they can expect when they go before the Civil Service Commission to appeal their matters in adverse actions. What this bill does essentially is it gives the Civil Service Commission, it mandates the use of an administrative law judge. Presently, the law allows them to have an administrative law judge, but what this does is it mandates it. And then we also set into place certain time standards that we establish and prescribe as aspirational for them to achieve. Bill 81-33 is a win for everybody, in my opinion. Bill 81-33 is it gives our very good commissioners the resources that they so need to help move cases along in the Civil Service Commission. We presently have a scenario where we have a commission made up of mostly volunteer members who only get a small stipend, who invest hours upon hours trying to get these matters through. But it's an impossible task, really. You cannot expect them to easily get through these cases when they're only sitting two to three, two to three days a week for only several hours in the evening. What this does is it gives them the resources that they need. It also helps the employee who is appealing an adverse action by giving them some relief. They now will have an administrative law judge who can hear certain matters and help move the case log, the cases along. The administrative law judge will work throughout the day in a normal eight to five type capacity. And it also is a win for the agencies who have gaps, cannot fill positions pending resolution of these cases where employees are terminated. So in my opinion, it's a very good scenario for everybody. And I believe that this bill serves the best interests of all the employees of the government of Guam, as I said, the Civil Service Commission and the governors, the government agencies. I think what, what I didn't do in this bill is I didn't, I didn't prescribe what the ALG's position ought to be. I didn't prescribe that it should be full-time classified. I didn't prescribe that it should be part-time. And I didn't prescribe that, that how the CSC should do it, whether they should hire another thing. And I also didn't give them a funding cap or a allocated budget. And I did that, Madam Speaker, because I believe that the Civil Service Commission and the commissioners can decide what their needs are going forward. Perhaps now they can, they can go with a full-time ALJ and set the budget that's needed for that. And as they, as they work to eliminate the backlog and get into a routine where the case, the management of cases is more routine and timely, then they can fall back and perhaps adjust that position to perhaps a part-time or they can contract it out. So what I did is I took into consideration the needs of the Civil Service Commission, what would work best in their judgment as well in terms of the capacity of the ALJ. And, and I gave them some room there. But I believe 81-33 is a sorely needed piece of legislation. We cannot have a situation where employees are waiting for years to have their cases heard and adjudicated. We need to have relief. Many of us in this body work to, work towards legislation that affects the livelihoods of people. And I believe that with the Civil Service Commission, many times the lives and livelihoods of people and their families are held in the balance. And it's not fair to anybody, really, to not have their matters adjudicated if they were wrongfully terminated, or to the agencies if they were rightfully terminated, to put the matter to closure. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, Mr. Vice Speaker?
Thank you very, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I rise in full support of this piece, piece of legislation.
I am writing right now. And Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of this bill. I, as the Oversight Chair of the Civil Service Commission, we did provide for an ALJ, but we did not mandate it. And I've been leaving it for the commission to, to move on it. Unfortunately, they have not. And I think this is an excellent piece of legislation that does mandate that it be done. I appreciate the fact that the good senator from Santa Rita to Mooning has written it in such a way that the Civil Service Commission can make the determination of whether or not it's going to be a, a full-time or a part-time, whether it's contractual or it's classified. And that kind of leeway, I think, is, is excellent to allow the Civil Service Commission to determine what its needs are. As the sponsor of the bill mentioned, the Civil Service Commission currently has cases calendared until 2017. That really is unconscionable. These families, these employees and their families have their lives held in abeyance while they, their cases are being heard. They have no income. And it places a financial strain on their families, if not worse, a, an actual strain on their marriages. And so it really is imperative that we find some way of being able to, to move this along. The way that the bill was written is that the ALJ will hear, will hear cases eight to five, come to a decision on, and a recommendation, and it'll be sent to the Civil Service Commission. The Civil Service Commission can adopt it in whole or in part or reject it. But at least all of the evidentiary hearing has been done by a licensed attorney and can, it can be presented to the commission and that, and they can sign off on it and, and move these cases along. I'm hoping that in the upcoming, but, in fact, no, I'm not hoping, but in the upcoming budget, we are going to be including sufficient funds for the Civil Service Commission to hire someone. And with this piece of legislation, they will have done the preliminary work of making a determination of what, what kind of ALJ they want, how, how much time they want the ALJ to, to be there. And we will finally be able to address the needs of the employees. Thankfully, I don't know if it's thankfully, but at one point when this was first introduced, there were literally thousands of cases at the Civil Service Commission. But the Civil Service Commission has since kicked back the cases involving the hay back to the Department of Administration because of that, what we did in the 28th Guam Legislature, Madam Speaker. And so, but they still have a lot of, of cases to hear. One of the attorneys that came and spoke at the hearing spoke of the fact that she needed nine nights to present her testimony for her case. And these are volunteers on the commission. And to, to have them set aside literally three weeks' worth of hearings to hear, to hear the evidentiary presentation by an attorney, it's, it's really difficult. And I know that some attorneys have been complaining about the fact that the Civil Service Commission has started to put time limitations on, on how much their presentation, uh, how much time their presentation is going to take. I really don't think that we, we can and should force them into the position where because of time constraints, they're, they're not able to, to adequately hear all the evidence. And so I think the mandating of the ALJ for the Civil Service Commission, I think, is an excellent idea. And the way that this bill was crafted is excellent. And it addresses everything. We've been in consultation with the AG on it, and she has made some suggestions which the committee and the author have, have included into the, into the consideration of the substitute. And I believe it, it is a very good working document. And I want to thank the Senator from Santa Rita to Mooning for introducing the bill and forcing the issue on getting this finally going. So I ask my colleagues to please support this piece of legislation for our employees. It's imperative that we provide them the opportunity to be able to move their cases as expeditiously as possible. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motions, anyone who would like to speak on Bill 81? Bill 81, anyone interested in speaking? Senator Torres, do you, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm quite pleased and relieved that there is very little discussion on this bill. We certainly put a lot of work into it and took a lot of considerations from not only the perspective of the employees who are undergoing the adverse action appeals before the body. We discussed this matter with attorneys who represent clients before the Civil Service Commission. We met with the Civil Service Commission Director and some of his key staffers. And we also spoke to, as the retiring speaker mentioned, to the Attorney General. So a lot of things about what we, what we put into this bill have been considered. And I think what it is also, what it does for the community, many times we have, we have rules and regulations and we establish licenses. And the, the public will question, well, why bother? There's no guarantee that anybody will follow anything. But it is necessary in our society to set rules and parameters because people have to have some confidence in what the outcome of, of their situation will be. In other words, an employee, you know, an employee who is, who is subjected to adverse action, the decision to appeal an action may be determined on whether this person can withstand years of, of hanging without resolution, with years of retaining an attorney at a very high cost to help defend their case. So if, by having this type of legislation where we know that we've now added a layer of resources to the Civil Service Commission, the commissioners can work with the administrative law judge to give him all sorts of cases, including Merit's case if, if they so desire, in having somebody help to adjudicate the matters and putting time standards where we know that within one year, they can aspire to adjudicate these cases. Of course, we also worked into factors of, of reality and time schedules, and we allow people the ability to waive. But we've at least set the, the parameters where everybody knows this, that this is what it ought to be. And it gives, it gives the employees some level of comfort and confidence in the system. It gives the, the employees some confidence in having resolutions come to fruition. And it also gives, I think, first and foremost, the Civil Service Commission the sorely needed tools that they want, and they've expressed that they want it. And I'm very glad and thankful that the, the Chair of the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication is committed to funding this position should this bill pass. Because certainly, we want to, we want to demonstrate to the public that we not only believe that we have to facilitate the process and give them the tools, but we are also committed to back it up with an appropriation. I want to thank my colleagues for their consideration of this measure and for all the input that they gave to amending and editing this piece of legislation. And I look forward to their full support on the third reading. Sizouas Massey.
You're welcome, Senator. So on the motion then to send 81-33 to the third reading file, no objections, so ordered. Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized for Bill 15.
Sizouas Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill Number 15-33 COR is substituted on the floor. We move to the third reading and if I can briefly discuss it.
You may proceed, Senator. So this is as substituted on the bill?
As substituted, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this bill was introduced in early January at the request of Guam Housing Corporation. And it was to allow the Guam Housing Corporation to have their audits at the same time. And one of the other provisions was to eliminate the requirement of Guam Housing Corporation to maintain a $500,000 in reserve for the housing. Say that?
One moment, because when I was looking through the committee report, it's definitely very different from what you've just presented. So what I need for you to do first is to accept?
I'm sorry. Move to accept, Madam Speaker, onto the, into the second reading or third reading?
To, right now, second.
Second reading.
You're right. Okay, so the motion is to accept the 15-33 as substituted on the floor?
As substituted on the floor. I apologize.
Okay, so on that motion, objections, so ordered.
And then, now to speak on it?
Yes, thank you.
Can I proceed?
Yes, thank you.
Sizouas Massey, Madam Speaker, and thank you again for that. So going back, going back to that, it, another provision of this bill would allow, would eliminate the requirement for Guam Housing Corporation to maintain the $500,000 in reserve for the housing trust fund. These items are administrative in focus and will allow for the Guam Housing Corporation to ensure a successful execution of its critical mandate. But I want to share with you also, Madam Speaker, that recently Guam Housing contacted me to express the need to address, to urgently address another administrative matter. And that matter is the issue of the ability to provide a clear, marketable, insurable title as stated in Public Law 31-195 for the Lada Estates project. The title insurance company has expressed concerns over some of the language in the grant deed that we approved, and it is preventing it from closing at this time. They've come back to me again, as you know, the project is going on, and asking that allowing the adjustment in this, allowing the, the adjustment in the audit date allows Guam Housing to be more efficient during the audit process and that, on that provision. But Martin Beneventi's attachment was, I mean, testimony is attached. I want to say that when we looked at the letter that was provided by Guam Housing to provide the affordable quality of housing for our island's senior citizens, one of the major components that I talked about with this clear, marketable, insurable title was, that was approved by this body on 2010, was that we wanted to make sure that when the developer built the houses, that they had nine years and that if they didn't build it on time, that it came back. The insurance company has noted that there may be conditions contained in the deed that may not have that provision in place, and they just want a further clarification. Section four of the substituted version shows the clarification of the grant deed, and it allows that, based on Public Law 31-195, that the provision stated in here as underlined would be sufficient for not, for them, for the insurance company to, to send to the developer a clear title on this, on this project. Madam Speaker, you and I know that Lada Estates has been going on for the last 24, now 25 years. We used to joke about it, that it's gone through four senators, I mean, four governors, four congressional delegates. Now in our 12th legislative terms, and this project is almost completed. We've done the first phase, we're now into the second phase. And this is really important. And as we look at providing affordable homes to our seniors and, and completing this project and seeing more affordable housing to our community, this is needed. And I want to just ask my colleagues if they can help me support this effort and, and make sure that as we move forward in providing more affordable homes, not just for our seniors, but for our community and our working-class families, that, that Guam Housing, working closely with the Affordable Housing Coordinating Council, has really done its due diligence in making sure that we provide quality homes for our people. And again, having to do administrative help and assistance to them so that they can do their, their mandate is, is something that I ask this August body to help me support. So I thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak briefly. I know that we've got a very heavy schedule, so Sizouas Massey.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise with some, I, I need to get an amendment in, and it'll be on section three. Section three proposes to repeal a provision in law that a late colleague of ours had introduced into one of the prior Guam Housing Corporation statutes. It was an excellent program, Madam Speaker. As I understand it, over 232 families, 232 first-time homeowners have been able to move into their own homes with the subsidy that is provided and the assistance that is provided by this amount, by this provision. The president of the Guam Housing Corporation has, has come to me and has pleaded with me about the fact that setting aside a half a million dollars every year for this program has put a, a great crimp in his, in his pro, in his ability to be able to, to do other things. I, I mean, I understand that a half a million dollars every year is difficult to set aside. So now being circulated is an amendment to reduce that amount from 500,000 to 250,000 for the first, for the fiscal years beginning now through 2017. And then for fiscal year 2018 onward, it'll be... Actually, I was going to have 100,000, but since I put 15, I guess it'll stay 15. For after 2018, it'll be 50,000. Hopefully by that time, we would have found another source. But at least for the next two fiscal years, I'd like to make sure that we at least have $250,000 in the kitty at the beginning of every fiscal year to be able to continue this very, very worthwhile program. Maybe we won't be able to get 232 families in, but at least 50 or 100 families, that, that'll go a long way to making sure that the young people on our island are able to have the, the American dream of owning a home. And this program that was established by the late Senator Ben Pangolino was an excellent, excellent program. And I really would help to, I mean, I would really not want to see it lost. And if we can, just reduce the, the set aside from 500,000 to 250,000 for the next two fiscal years, and then after that, 50,000. And by that time, hopefully, between the young people in here who will be coming after us, that they will find another source to be able to make sure that their generation and the generation after theirs are able to afford to be first-time homeowners. So I'm hoping that there'll be support for this simple amendment to keep this program alive. I, I cannot allow the, a full repeal. Please. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. Senator Munia Barnes on the amendment?
Sizouas Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just want to say that I stand and rise in support of this amendment. And, and I truly appreciate my vice chair, the good vice speaker, for, for realize, for working closely with me on this. And it was never the intent to, to close the program. I know we have to look for, for new resources, but I think this is a, a good start because it wasn't my intent to, to close the program. And, and I fully support this amendment. Sizouas Massey. And I want to thank the, I know that he's in heaven watching over us and, and know that, that, that this is a good thing.
Well, you're, you're lucky you got the wish. He was going to pull your leg tonight. Mister, Mister. I, I think if we, if we read further in the Guam Housing Corporation's testimony, Mr. Vice Speaker, you'll be happy that there would be at least 34 maybe families that first-time home, home buyers will be able at the 250,000 because they have indicated that they have reservations for 35 at $262,000. So you'll be able to see at least 34 families with that 250,000. Yeah. So thank you for that. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the amendment? There's no objections? Want to make sure. Nobody wants, there's a burning desire to speak? Okay, then, so there being no objection, the amendment passes. On the motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak? I know you guys are, you're looking at me and smiling and like you really want to get up and speak? Send it down. Okay, so that's the motion that I got from my colleagues in there in the corner. So on Bill 15-33, the, no, Senator Agun would like to speak soon as he gets off the phone. Senator Agun? Senator Agun. On the main motion.
Good morning, Madam Speaker and fellow senators. Madam Speaker, I guess my issue here with regards to bill number 15-33 is I certainly want to stand in support of the notion that the developer of this parcel of property continue with the development because that's critical because ultimately it's going to provide housing to many of our people. In this case, my understanding is that this program would ultimately benefit our uncles with reasonable, low-cost rental facilities. My question, Madam Speaker, if the sponsor, and I'm doing this for purposes of making sure that our people understand exactly what provisions have been added to this particular legislation for purposes of transparency. Because we're talking about land assets that the people of Guam have given to a developer so that ultimately they develop it. I understand that in the last 20-plus years, we as a community have enacted legislation after legislation to try to see if in fact this parcel of property can be specifically utilized to benefit our people through low-cost housing facilities. And that's exactly what the developer in this case is applying. Madam Speaker, if the sponsor would yield, I was looking at the original legislation that was reported out by the committee and the sponsor did allude that section four was an addition to the original legislation that was reported out by the committee and that this version has been accepted for purposes of discussion. I understand that. But if I can ask the sponsor, please to yield to a couple of questions, just as it applies to section four. I want to make sure that I understand what the provision would provide and how our people can be in the know in terms of ultimately why this provision, in her opinion and likely in the opinion of a majority of members of this body, would ultimately be beneficial to our people. So my first question, Madam Speaker, with regards to section four is line 16 which reads, notwithstanding any other provision of law. Because that is an all-encompassing provision. Is that a clause that is necessary for this particular section and can you explain what laws out there that this section really should be exempted from in terms of being applicable? That would be the first question.
Senator, do you yield to the question? The question is that what other laws are in existence in which, you know, to use the language, notwithstanding any other provision that somehow would.
Whether the subsequent entire sentence can stand alone, which reads, and I understand it, "The right of reversion contained in the grant deed with continuing conditions and restrictions approved by public law 31-195 shall be triggered only by the failure by the developer to build homes within the nine-year period commencing at the date of enactment of public law 31-282." Can that statement alone stand without, notwithstanding any other provision of law clause?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Can it stand without at least impacting your intent?
Madam Speaker, the reason why the notwithstanding provision of law is there is because as you know, with the passage of public law 31-195, there were provisions that were put in based on the LADA Estate project, which deals with the federal law income housing tax credit projects. And this means that the developer would be able to take a dollar-for-dollar tax credit for its investment in this project. Those provisions were done in public law 31-195, making sure that we clarified the grant deed and the provisions that were there and that the hiccup that's happened, this notwithstanding clause needs to be incorporated so that we only, we are only assuring that based on what I talked about, that if the developer does not build the houses within the nine years, then the project gets reverted back to the Guam Housing Corporation. And that the provisions that are in question to not give the free title to the developer is being clarified right now. And that's why the notwithstanding provision needs to be installed because we've already approved it in public law 31-195. In order to clarify that, based on what has been sent our way through the, I mean, through the request of Guam Housing, they've tried to work on this issue without having come to this body, but the title guarantee has said, the lawyers have said that in order for them to accept the change, that because we approved the agreement, that it has to come back.
Senator, wish I could answer your question?
Madam Speaker, I really do not understand because the sentence stands by itself and it's clear. The right of reversion, this is without the notwithstanding any other provisional law provision. The right reversion contained in the grant deed with continuing conditions and restrictions approved by the two laws that was just mentioned by the sponsor, approved by public law 31-195, shall be triggered only by the failure by the developer to build homes within the nine-year period commencing upon the date of enactment of public law 31-382. So Madam Speaker, I believe that this particular clause could stand on its own merit in ensuring that the objective of the sponsor of this legislation is accomplished by virtue of removing the, notwithstanding any other provisional law. It's an all-encompassing provision, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, if I may, based on what, when we work with land transactions that have to come to this body, we want to make sure that what has already been agreed upon in public law 31-195 is intact and based on clarifying the hiccup that the title guarantee has questioned in reference to providing the clear, clear marketable insurance title that needs to be issued, that they want this language in and with the proposed amendment that they will accept. I want to make sure that we don't trigger any other rules. Take for example, if we had to do appraisals, that every land transaction that we deal with has to do with appraisal. We've already gone and did all the necessary legislation for this latter project to move forward. But the title guarantee, the security title, in order for them to give a free and clear marketable insurable title, they want this provision in. And I just want to make sure that, I guess for me would be the security blanket, to making sure that we're only dealing with this title, with this provision.
Madam Speaker, I appreciate the response by the sponsor of the legislation, but there are other laws that apply. And this is a multiple housing subdivision, so in regards to the appraisals, in regards to the identification of the respective lots, the subdivision of the titles, there are provisions and other laws that ensure and assure our community that in fact everything is going to be done on the up and up. That was, that was the, one of the questions that I had, Madam Speaker, but another question that, please, I need clarification. So just for purposes of the people, our people out there who are listening, the additional provisions in section four reads, "If the current owner or its successor fails to complete construction prior to the expiration of such period, title to the property that remains unconstructed may revert to Guam Housing Corporation." I'm fine with that provision because that's a reversionary clause that says, developer, you've got nine, 10 years to develop this government of Guam parcel property and sell it or lease it so that in fact our people benefit as a result of low-cost housing. So I don't have a curse, a cost or concern with regards to that reversionary clause. If it's not developed within the nine, 10-year period, then it comes back to the government of Guam, the Guam Housing Corporation. The subsequent statement reads, "All other special conditions contemplated shall remain enforceable by judicial remedy, but shall not be grounds for reversion of the property to Guam Housing Corporation." So, Madam Speaker, let me read that again. That line two on page four reads, "All other general, or all other special conditions contemplated shall remain enforceable by judicial remedy," so obviously all the other provisions of law. You can only go through the judiciary to be able to resolve them and ensure that the government carries out its responsibilities and ensures that the developer complies with the law, "but shall not be grounds for reversion of the property to Guam Housing Corporation." My question is, you may as well throw out the, this is my interpretation, the 10-year, 11, 10-year reversionary clause with this provision right here. Because it says, "All other special conditions contemplated shall remain enforceable by judicial remedy, but shall not be grounds for reversion of the property to Guam Housing." So who would get the property? It would remain in the hands of the developer? Then we need to just state that.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yeah, Madam Speaker, based on the legislation that was done in the previous terms, this was an ongoing issue that had to be litigated and that there was a $10 million liability to the government of Guam. Government of Guam owed more than $10 million. What had happened was through the settlement to clear Maeda's claim of the $10 million, the property was sold by Guam Housing to the developer to move on with this program and to build the houses in certain phases. But there was a timeline that was given to the developer to build within the nine years. And the only thing that is in question right now, based on a, on a, the title guarantees concern before they issued this free and securable title, free and clear, was they needed, they wanted this provision in because there's some other covenants in the law that, I mean, in the provision, in the agreement that talks about judicial process as it relates to livestock, junk cars and other things and that if there was any violation to that, that shouldn't be at the fault of the developer to revert the houses back to Guam Housing if, if there was a violation by the renter or the one owning the property. So.
Madam Speaker, I really appreciate the response by the sponsor of the legislation, that why have that condition? Because this statement says, "You shall go through the judiciary for a judicial remedy, but shall not be grounds for reversion of the property to Guam Housing." So why have those provisions in law that says livestock is restricted or limited in this housing subdivision and then say you can go to the judiciary, resolve this issue, but guess what? For noncompliance, it's not subject to a reversion of the property back to the government of Guam. To me, I'm trying to understand and that's the main purpose of my line of questioning, Mr. Speaker, now that Speaker, Mr. VJ, Vice Speaker, VJ Cruz has taken the seat. So, Mr. Speaker, that is really my issue in regards to looking at this particular provision. Why go through the judicial remedy if you're not providing an option for the judge to say these particular conditions were not met? So based on the previous established law, which allows for reversion of this property back to the government of Guam, by the way, that is not a consideration. So the property would not, based on this, should this provision become law, my understanding would not, that would not be one of the conditions where the property will revert back to the government of Guam.
But, Mr. Speaker, if I may, it was never meant to trigger that if there was a violation by the, by the folks living in the house, that if there was a violation, that it would trigger the reversionary clause, that it would go back to Guam Housing, that the developer would have to give the property back to Guam Housing. And if we can take.
Then, Mr. Speaker, that to me, it goes back, it refers back, I still have the floor, Mr. Speaker, it refers back to those preconditions that were set with the use of the property, where the government said, "You shall have use of this large parcel of property, developer. Develop it and ensure that you provide low-cost housing for the people of Guam and our uncles." That is what the developer has stepped in and done, Mr. Speaker. I recognize that the developer has stepped in and taken over this property, developed, I understand, 60 homes for our uncles and I understand that there's a lot more homes that still need to be constructed. I am not debating that issue. I am trying to make sure, Mr. Speaker, that the people of Guam understand what clause was added in addition to and above and beyond the provision that was reported out of the committee and initially accepted on the floor for discussion by virtue of the committee and rules referral. So just so that I continue and I close out on this particular section, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to just read the last line of the addition, the new section four, "For purposes of our people who are listening, Guam Housing Corporation, through its board of directors, rightfully so, is granted the authority to execute any deed necessary to effectuate the intent of this provision, provided however that such actions remain consistent with this section." So I stand here expressing concerns and wanting clarification from the original sponsor in regards to those, the implications of those two provisions, Mr. Speaker. The notwithstanding any other provision of law clause, could that be excluded and still accomplish the objective that is being sought by the sponsor? And the other provision that I had concerns are, if you go through the judicial remedy process, you go to the extent of going to the judiciary to try to address some preset conditions and requirements by the government of Guam, it reads that those, once the judgment is rendered, that the judge no longer has the option as part of a consideration that this property will revert back to the government of Guam. That's my understanding. I wanted to ensure that our people understood exactly what this provision is and it does not take away, and I need to clarify my statement, Mr. Speaker, it does not, my questions does not take away from what the developer is doing in terms of providing low-cost housing and meeting the statute of the two previous laws that were cited, public law 31-195 and public law 31-282. So I stand up and I appreciate the sponsor for responding to my line of questions, albeit there's a couple of responses that I still was not able to understand and comprehend the specific insertion of the notwithstanding clause because that's all-encompassing, but regardless, I do not have a motion to amend. I just wanted to ensure that our people understood exactly what is being proffered above and beyond what was accepted by the committee. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. We'll take a short reset. I thought the speaker instructed me to. Senator Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the whole intent of section four is basically to clarify and affirm past legislative actions that were concurred by the governor which resulted in current statute. However, the exchange that we've just been exposed to not only clarified the situation but probably makes things more confusing. And so I rise to try to clarify the situation. I want to recognize the mover of this bill, who's made it very clear that the intent here is to respond to a concern raised by not only Guam Housing, but the title company with respect to how the underwriter believes that this property title is not, it's not marketable, it's not clear, simply because their interpretation or the underwriter's interpretation, and this is like any other experience we go through as a legislature, we pass a bill to float a bond, the bond goes through vetting from the department, from GITA and from the bond council and then it's put out to market, but prior to that, before we approve the indemnifications and the terms of those bonds, we've been brought into session time after time to clarify some concerns that bond council raises, which would prevent this, the marketing of these bonds from going forward. This is, in this case, it's no different. We have a situation where we have current statute that provided for affordable homes program and also provided for how to resolve this several decade-old dilemma, but also this nexus of $10 million liability and we recognize the oversight chair, Senator Barnes' efforts to keep this legislature focused on that issue. And what she's doing here again, Mr. Speaker, is she's keeping us focused on a legislative remedy that's just succinct. We're not changing any laws, we're not, by this section, by saying notwithstanding any other provision of law, the right of reversion is only. the right of reversion is only tied to the nine-year requirement, contractual requirement to build homes. And so the discussion that we just had was, well, how come in the last sentence, "All other special conditions contemplated shall remain enforceable by judicial remedy, but shall not be grounds for reversion of the property to Guam Housing?" And discussion was, why can't this property go back to Guam Housing? Well, one of the reasons why this title currently is not clear or not marketable, because the underwriter, in the underwriter's opinion, which does not share by Guam Housing or by others behind this project, Mr. Speaker, is that the underwriter's position is, "You have a special condition that provides for special covenances that, for example, limits the chickens on yards, prohibits noxious noises, you know, so that you can have some semblance of a livable, decent, clean community." So in this case, if there's a special condition where it says you can't have any noxious noise, or you can't have chickens in your property, now if you're an underwriter of this project, then and this underwriter believes that if this tenant is found in violation of the special condition, that that property will go back to the Guam Housing Corporation? Now, obviously, we believe that the actions of a tenant should not prohibit or harm in any way the developer, because what would happen by judicial remedy is that that tenant will be told, "You either stop doing what you're doing," or there's the eviction process. And that's simply what we're doing here. What the Oversight Chair could have done, since the continuing conditions, the deed covenants, everything was adopted word for word by statute, we know that if there's any concerns or any clarifications that need to be made, that it has to be made by legislative action. We all know that. And so Senator Barnes simply could have just presented us with all those documents, bombarded us with all those, with the copies of the continuing condition restriction, and then show all those amendments. But if you can see in section four, this legislature, through our action on the passage of this bill and through the governor's support of this bill, is simply clarifying, all we're doing is clarifying that the right of reversion is simply tied to the nine-year requirement to build homes pursuant to that contract. That's it. So we're not deleting special conditions. There's still going to be a special covenants. And if Senator Barnes didn't include that language regarding the special conditions that shall be, remain enforceable by judicial remedy, then essentially, we could have been saying that it could be like a slum neighborhood. So I think this amendment that she's offering, certainly, it's provided for an additional administrative support for Guam Housing, but it affirms the legislature's commitment that the title to that property shall remain marketable. We've heard from Guam Housing, we've heard from the title company, saying that they've been at this for, I think they started a year, but they've been actively going back and forth over the last three months. And, you know, when two sides are not in agreement, it's better just to come up with a solution that both sides can agree to. And in this case, the underwriter is comfortable with this language, and everybody is wondering, what's the urgency? Well, the urgency, as we know, Mr. Speaker, is that pursuant to the federal tax income, federal tax credit program, that the developer can only finance up to 50%. Now, there's only 49% right now has been self-financed. In order for this program to be made available, they would have to have an investor to cover the other 50%. And so that's where we're at. We're told that the project right now is at a standstill, and if there's no legislative intervention, and if there's no movement to support what Senator Barnes is doing, then certainly, we will not be able to make good on the commitment that the titles be marketable. But more importantly, we lose an opportunity of all these federal tax credits that can be availed to provide that these projects become affordable and that our manuncles can avail themselves to this community. And so, that's, in a nutshell, that's what we're doing here by section four. This is the presentation that's being made by our Oversight Chair. If Guam Housing is presenting a problem to us, instead of going back and re-adopting what we've adopted before, Senator Barnes, I commend her for saying, "Let's just reaffirm that the right of reversion is tied to the nine-year requirement to build. All those special conditions remain intact. If a tenant is noncompliant, they can still be evicted, but their actions will not cause the property to be reverted back to Guam Housing." Now, if that's, if some of you think that if you're a landlord and you're renting your property and your tenant is not complying with your rules, that you should lose your property? And I think that's, from the perspective of the underwriter, is that they're going to be investing a lot of money into this project, and if that land can be reverted back to the government because someone has too many chickens in their yard, or they're noncompliant with the special covenances, and that's what caused pause in this entire process. And so I stand in support of the bill, certainly in support of the bill as substituted. And I hope that I could have only added to what Senator Barnes has been presenting to us this morning with respect to a legislative remedy and a solution that's focused on what needs to be done, without giving up anything we've committed to doing before, just what needs to be done to make the underwriter comfortable so that this project can go forward. So thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to present on this bill.
Thank you. On the list to speak, is the speaker? Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Madam Speaker, you recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I have, you know, some concerns as I read, of course, the language. Yes, can you hear me? Hello? It's on, right? Okay. As I read, of course, the language, and I was trying to follow, of course, you know, all of the conversations. And I might be wrong, I'm no attorney, that's for sure, and I'm not practicing to be one at all either. But at least in my dealings, when I used to be in the Department of Education, that when we have a contract, and at that time, of course, was with the Guam Federation of Teachers, that we were informed is that once that contract is signed between two to three parties, that then you can't pass legislation to change a contract. That's my first understanding. Now, I had pulled out, of course, the grant deed, because it is, it wasn't originally in the original bill that was passed. It alluded, of course, to several exhibits, and the grant deed was in Exhibit A. So I was trying to pull out, so I pulled out what was in that grant deed, only then to go back to the language. And if you look on page four, and comparing what is in, because the grant, of course, is law now, because we made it a part of the exhibit, for the law. And on page three, where it says, "If the current owner or his successor fails to complete construction prior to, into page four, the expiration of such period, title to the property that remains unconstructed may, may revert to Guam Housing Corporation." My understanding is that it shall. And by pulling out the grant deed then, to actually look at what it is in the grant deed now, that it says here that, well, if I can read this, because the printing is not that good, but under "reversion on breach with notice by grantor." It says here, I'm trying to find the part where I can read, at least notifying grantee that grantor elects that the title of the whole of the conveyed premises, excluding subdivided lots that may have been sold to third party, has reverted to grantor, and therefore, upon the title of the whole of such premises, shall immediately and without necessity of any further action on the part of the grantor, revert to and re-vest in grantor, and so on. I'm sorry, one side of the printout was blurred. But, so now my question is, is that are we then, at least from what I'm hearing, is that it's only to make clear that the part of the deed here, or the covenant among the owners of the properties, that it was only addressing either livestock, like hogs and chickens, and then other parts of the premise that would be unsightly, maybe, to have abandoned vehicles, you know, all that, to try to have a pristine residential area? That that's all we were going to do? But what I also see here now is that we're actually taking away, or rather, making it a "may", when that means that within nine years, if nothing is done, if there's no construction, then it reverts back. But now this amendment is saying that it would, it "may." So, and if I'm hearing this correctly, that's the first amendment I want to make, is that it goes back to what it originally is stated, that it shall and not "may" revert back in nine years. That's at least my understanding, that that's what, you know, we're not intending to touch, and that the only thing we want to amend by law would be that the part of allowing, or the disallowance, rather, of livestock, you know, in a residential area. So, and, yeah. Unless, of course, you want me to ask that as a question, but that's my first amendment on that particular subject area. Page four is where it's line one, "unconstructed may to shall." And keeping in line with what's in the grant deed, where it says it "shall." This is the grant deed. And this is the.
On the Juan Pad Amendment, any senator wish to be heard on the Juan Pad Amendment to change the wording from "may" to "shall" on page four, line? Line one? Senator Hagen? Any senator? Any objection? Madam Speaker? Okay. No one wants to address this? On the amendment, any objection to the amendment?
Thank you very much. The other, I'm just, of course, always trying to think out loud and reading this and hoping my colleagues will also be able to chime in and see if, you know, I may be wrong. But, and I don't know who to ask this question, you know, Mr. Speaker, because I know that the law was passed. We had incorporated, like I say, Exhibit A for the grant D. And logically, at least to me, so if there's anyone who can answer this question, you know, not necessarily the chairperson, but, you know, I don't know, maybe legal yourself, Senator Spohdon, with some legal background, can help me here think this through, is that if there is, like I said earlier, that contract that was signed, can we then, by law now, go in and change a contract? And the fine line could be that because we passed the exhibit, we included the exhibit as part of the law, so then it's something that we could change. But if that is the case, then I'm thinking out loud here, is that could it then be where the title company, who is going to give out these titles, and Guam Housing, and, of course, the contractors, then put something together, and then send it now to the legislature then, with that action, then to take action, you know, to accept what they're saying. And that takes me then now to lines five. So then, the Guam Housing Corporation, through its board of directors, is granted, now, see, this is the thing that's kind of confusing to me, because we're doing some things here by law, but now we're saying to the Housing Corporation, through its board of directors, is granted the authority to execute any deed, any deed necessary to effectuate the intent of this provision, provided however, that such actions remain, you know, consistent with this section. So, I mean, I'm just thinking, again, I'm not an attorney, although we're doing this by law, to say we want, without being very specific to the deed. Now, remember, we're not being specific to the deed. We're saying this is what it is, that livestock, abandoned vehicles, chickens, you name it, whatever, hogs that are around there, that they couldn't give clear title because of that. However, that part of the deed is not mentioned here. And so then, therefore, it's like a blanket authorization now to Guam Housing Corporation, through its board then, to execute any deed necessary. So, to make sure then, there's just not anything and everything, that I would like then to proffer an amendment here, and I need to work with legal counsel on this, is that when they do that then, that it be brought back to the legislature now for action. Just like the way departments and agencies who want to pass rules and regulations, that they go out and follow the AAA process, then they send it down here. But this is not going through a AAA process, just saying that whatever then they decide then that they need to do to execute, that they deem necessary, that then they submit that to the legislature for action. That's the amendment. Bring it back to the legislature.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to stand and rise in opposition to that. We have gone through this project for the last 25 years. The reason why we're here is because the security title says that there is this clause, the permission to give the Guam Housing Corporation, through its board of directors, to execute the deed necessary to work, to effectuate the intent of this provision, but everything else will remain consistent and the same of what has already been granted, to redo all that paperwork and to bring it back to this august body, and then know that there's a timeline, because we're already at almost 39% completion or 48% completion, it is at the standstill. In order for us to get the resources needed from the LIT, the federal tax credits, we're going to lose it. And I'm just asking this body, as it pertains to this, is this was brought to us, as in other provisions that have been done in the past here? We've already gone through this. The concern that came from the security title was that this reversion, they wanted to make sure that the deed was clarified regarding the reversionary clause that would be triggered to the, by the, I mean, against the developer. Mr. Speaker, I, I object.
Senator Torres, you also wanted to speak on the Juan Pad Amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I also speak in objection to the Juan Pad Amendment. What we're dealing here, as the retiring speaker just mentioned too, is we're seeking to facilitate the ability to obtain clear, marketable, and insurable title to these properties. And during this discussion, I had the opportunity to go back and look at Public Law 31-195. And during this discussion, I had the opportunity to go back and look at Public Law 31-195, Bill 416-31, and all the amendments and attachments. It is quite lengthy, but there is one legislative intent here that was contained in Bill 416-31 that I think is worth reiterating for the body, just to get an understanding of what we're talking about. In Public Law 31-195, which is Bill 416-31, there is one section here where it talks about Illegisletur in Guam, further seeks to ensure that the eventual owners of the affordable homes will be able to obtain clear, marketable, and insurable title by approving and ratifying the transfer of the subject property and accepting the Lata Estates settlement agreement, a grant deed with continuing conditions and restrictions, and decision and order by and between Guam Housing Corporation and Maeda Pacific Corporation. It is abundantly clear to me, in listening to the discussion, what the intent of the author was in putting this section in, and whether it is germane to the original bill, I believe it is, because it is talking about affordable housing and the provision of affordable housing. And if in fact, we're in a situation where there is some time sensitivity to ensuring that the title companies can issue clear, marketable, and insurable title, I think that it's incumbent on us as a body to clarify that. I don't believe that we need to go back and change anything. There was a long history of the project and some disagreements, and it eventually resulted in a lawsuit that was resolved. So, we want to leave history as is. And what we want to do at this point, I believe, is just facilitate the process. And if there's some clarification that needs to be spelt out in black and white in a piece of legislation, as a rider to a bill, I don't see any harm in that. Because we do want and we do need to ensure the success and facilitate the success of affordable housing on Guam. So I stand in opposition to the amendment, and I concur with the author, that the intent, the intent by including Section Four appears to be clear. And if you take the time to look at the actual legislation, it is clear that that is what is simply clarifying points in there. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Any other senator wish to be heard? Senator Hagen, I see you rising.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, first of all, I want to thank the good speaker from Malolo for offering her amendment, because it really goes back to what I was discussing a little earlier. The public hearing process would have provided clarity in terms of what the critical timelines or what critical timelines exist in regards to getting this particular issue on this floor and to address it as quickly as possible. And the previous speaker is absolutely correct. We don't want to impede the process if in fact it's already moving forward, especially if the developer is trying to avail himself or herself of federal tax credits. So although I understand the perspective of the mover of the amendment, to ensure that this particular document comes back to the legislature for consideration, I am going to have to step back and refrain from endorsing that motion, because our job is let's set the template. Let us set the parameters in which these things need to go through and recognize a sense of urgency, recognize why it was added to this particular provision, recognize what the implications are, but most importantly, recognize also what the benefits are to our people. And that is eventually allowing the developer, based on the parameters of the two previous laws that were cited, allowing the developer to be able to develop the property and provide low-cost housing for our monocles and our people in the community. If that's the end goal, and the structure is here, the template is here, with the restrictions, the appropriate restrictions, then we need to allow the Housing Corporation Board Directors to do their job in compliance with the law, that event, or this legislation, or whatever legislation is passed, that would become law, in compliance with the law that exists at that time. So I stand in expressing my position, Mr. Speaker, on the proposed amendment. Thank you.
Chair, I'll take a short recess. After the speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I mean, it's obvious, of course, after hearing some of the others who spoke basically against the idea of having to bring it back to the legislature. And I mean, I'm really puzzled, exactly, at least what I was told, that the problem here is in the Grant D, 5.3, page five of that Grant D, where it says, "No animals, livestock, or poultry then shall be raised," I can't read the rest here, "and a lot of the subdivision for whatever, for commercial purposes." And if this is what they're saying, then okay, then I withdraw that amendment and put in exactly what it is that others have come to my office to lobby why this is necessary. And if that's the only thing that's holding up, giving a clear, marketable title, then so be it. Then they don't have to come back to the legislature. But let's be specific to what it is then, that is going to be consistent with this section, and that is no animals, livestock, or poultry. That's at least what I'm hearing. I didn't hear anything about no trash, garbage, I didn't hear anything about outside toilet facilities, septic tanks, or anything that's, you know, abandoned vehicles. I mean, those are things that are listed in the deed. So we're going to go in there and change the deed, they're going to go in there to change the deed that says here, the Board then, will execute what needs to be done to make sure then, that they're able to give out this marketable, clear, marketable title. Now, I've not seen anything, and I've asked that, to see that in writing, and I've not seen it. I've only been told by the mover, or the author of this amendment, I've been told by other colleagues who have spoken on the subject, I've been told by others who are lobbying for this particular amendment. So therefore, I'm going to withdraw that amendment, but I want to put in exactly what it is that everybody's telling me, and that is 5.3 of the Grant D. Unless somebody's not telling us the truth. So my first motion then, because others are not supporting, is to come back to the legislature for us to review, and you just indicated that, is that, you know, when we do things like this without a public hearing, we're unable to flush out everything that we need to know to make an intelligent decision, which we all should be doing. And I surely don't like making decisions when I don't have the facts either, and when I can only go with laws, and I pulled out the deed, I can only base it on what I'm reading. And so what I am being told outside on the side, is that these are problems, these livestock, these animals, this poultry, hogs, whatever it is, that are a problem in a residential area, then okay, I have no qualms at all about that. But let's be clear then about it, that that's what we want to do, that that's what we're authorizing the Board of Directors here to execute any changes.
The speaker's amendment is to add... The provisions of 503.
Mr. Speaker, I'm going to object to that. You know what? When this issue came to this body, and the question was asked to make sure that the amendments that were needed, based on the concerns from the security title, that will work within that provisions and that everything was cleared and okayed with, now we're adding, how many more years are we going to work with this project, Mr. Speaker? We are probably going to lose $60 million worth of resources to build more houses, and this project is going to be at a standstill for another 20, 30 years? Please, please. I'd be the first to come, and so I'm just...
I understand. But the thing is, is that they put us in a very difficult position when they go back and forth with themselves three months and then tell us on the 11th hour that we have to pass something. We should have known about this in January or February, and we could have had a hearing.
Mr. Speaker, if I may, a point of information. When the concern was sent to us, we asked the exact same questions, and they said because of, because it, in order for the title company to give clear title, because the legislature approved the agreement, that they only wanted to see that the approval to work this hiccup us was to come back and get the approval from this body. I mean, are we going to bring out everything again and start from scratch again? I mean, anyways.
Senator Spohdon?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. If I may ask the author of the bill a question, and the question would be, what kind of timeline are we on? In other words, she's mentioned the fact that we stand to lose X amount of millions of dollars, and so I guess first and foremost, I just need to understand if there is a time element in this.
Mr. Speaker, I will be more than glad to answer that. As a matter of fact, everybody's received a copy from the president of the Guam Housing Corporation, and if I may, I want to go ahead and read it to you. It's the Lata Estates Project, now known as the Summer Town Homes. Dear Senator Barnes, Munia Barnes, thank you for taking the time to address this issue. In an effort to clarify the urgency of this matter, please allow me to offer the following. As you are aware, the Lata Estates Project is a federal low-income housing tax credit, the LIHTC Project. This means that the developer will be able to take dollar-for-dollar tax credit for its investment in this affordable housing project. The allowance of this tax credit is the basis for funding for the development cost of low-income housing by allowing an investor to take a federal tax credit equal to a percentage of the costs incurred for development of the low-income units. In this case, the Lata Estates Project has reached approximately 48% completion. In order to take full advantage of the allowable LIH, low-income housing tax credits, financial investments must be made before construction reaches 49% completion, and certain program deadlines and milestones must be achieved. The developer is in the process of securing its necessary financing to complete construction, but has been delayed in closing due to concerns raised by the title insurance company. I explained in my previous letter to you dated May 26, 2015, Guam Housing Corporation has been attempting to resolve this issue for months, so that we can provide the clear, marketable, and insurable title necessary for this project to move forward without any further delay. At risk is the timely completion of this project and approximately $60 million in federal low-income housing tax credit. This project has seen too many delays. The clarification requested clears the last of many hurdles this project has faced. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter, your favorable and expeditious response is appreciated. Sincerely, Martin C. Beneventi, President, Guam Housing Corporation.
Mr. Speaker, I appreciate all that information. I have yet, I have not seen that letter, so we were not privy to all that information. Okay, we just saw it right now, in fact, I'm taking it just right now. But, Mr. Speaker, my issue is that if we're not under a time constraint, I mean, and I understand the necessity of moving forward to make sure that this project moves on for affordable housing, not just for our seniors, but also for low-income homes. However, it was posed earlier by one of the previous speakers, that she was looking to us, you, Mr. Speaker, with your legal background, and myself as a legal background, but we need to understand, I think everybody needs to understand, that even as lawyers, we don't make decisions on the fly. We don't do anything or say anything without really doing the research. So, you know, unless we understand the full magnitude and the breadth of the situation, it would be very hard to even give any kind of direction in that source. We can generalize about some things, but it has, it carries no weight until we know more specifics and do more research. Even our own legal counsel, I believe, would probably, if we asked her for direction on this, would have to go and take a good look at what we need to do to make sure that this is legally sound. I believe that there may be some legal issues that need to be addressed. And I agree with those members of this body who feel that maybe we might be rushing into this, and if there is no time constraint, say, for example, in the next 30 days, if we don't pass this, then we lose the $60 million, and I didn't hear that from the author of this legislation, it might be prudent for us to bring this back to the committee and have a public hearing on this, on this particular section, so that we can understand what the real ramifications are. Again, I don't know what's in that deed, I don't know if there are any provisions in there that may actually put us in a situation where we're dealing with a contract that we can't change, or we shouldn't be able to change under the contracts clause. So my motion here, Mr. Speaker, is perhaps to put it back into committee, have a public hearing on this, and, you know, try to understand the intricacies involved and what the effects and ramifications would be if we go down this road. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
I object.
There's been, Senator Tony, then Senator Blas.
That's right. I apologize, Mr. Speaker, we do have to dispose of a previous motion.
Well, no, her First Amendment of shall and may.
That one passed.
That one passed.
Then I bring back my, I withdraw my motion at this present time, Mr. Speaker, so that we can address the speaker's motion. Thank you.
Okay. Yep.
The last amendment, I made an amendment to have it come back to the legislature once all the parties would come together and for the legislature to take action. And having heard, of course, some of our colleagues who were not amenable to that, then I withdrew that, so then, and wanted then to put another amendment. So the first action will be to accept the withdrawal.
Is there any objection to accepting the withdrawal?
So the amendment now then, and I'm prefacing this, of course, based on at least what I'm hearing from our colleagues, and have heard also from others lobbying support for this, is that it has to do with a specific section in the Grant D. And that's why I was thinking, my early argument is that we really can't go in there and change it, but we're doing it by laws, I guess, whatever we do carries. So therefore, whatever the complaint is, the concern is, and I'm looking at the Grant Deed, they're about livestock, so they're there, I wanted to say then, that to execute that part of the deed that's necessary to do this, which is on 5.3 of the deed.
All right. Can we have, yes, let's get it in writing. Some of us have made a commitment to a presentation at 11 for police officers, unless no one's going, and we're going to stay. I think we should take a short recess at this time until 1:00. Is there any objection to doing that? All right, recess until 2:00.